I think we are live. Yep, we are. Still don't understand, it seems like we used to have a button that would allow us to get everything set up and then start live streaming and now it seems like it's different. But I get it. I'm an old man, so I have to be able to change with the times. And uh, starting this new little project for Steven, uh, I believe he's in Arkansas. Is that right? Correct me if I'm wrong, Steven. Uh, but uh, I thought I would take some stuff from this other project I was working on. Just because I like the way I do the LBLs here. Uh, I think that's the LVL hatch I like, that poche. But anyway, we'll get into that later. What I want to do first is kind of start out with this footing, well, actually a po- a column on this footing and I think what I'm gonna do is just um, I thought I had a uh, a um, steel column somewhere. Where's that middle? That's an optical illusion. And I don't, so I'm just gonna draw another one, it won't take but a minute. I want my base plate to be, let's see, six, eight, ten, you know, uh, base plate to be ten inches. And the reason I want this base, the reason I want to do a steel column here is because Steven is concerned about, wind. And with wind, we have to be concerned about uplift. I want to make this bottom plate a quarter inch thick. Like that. And then we're going to make that a group. Cause then I want my column sticking to it. Oops, I did it anyway, didn't I? Is that a group? Alright Tony, are we starting off on the wrong foot? Why is that not, I'm selecting it and it's not turning blue? That's blue. Okay, alright, let's move on, move on Tony. So the column itself would be uh, six inches. I think um, I think that would be appropriate size, an appropriate size. Three. I'm thinking about getting a new laptop because the numbers on my keyboard are all like space cadet looking. That rounded looking corner mess and they're all together. The lines are all bunched up and so, yeah, that's my excuse for mistyping this morning. Alright, so we're gonna start off with an eight, eighth foot column. And actually minus a half inch. Because we're gonna have two quarter inch plates, one on top, well, let's see. Actually, we're gonna go back up a quarter of an inch. And we'll adjust that in a minute. Uh, I'll show you what I'm talking about, cause the top plates are gonna be different. We'll basically just have flanges. So um, on this, I'm thinking three sixteenths wall, three sixteenths wall thickness, so we'll offset our thing of about three sixteenths. And then we will take our push-pull tool and go all the way back down. And we will have ourselves a hollow tube. Isn't that cool? Now I realize that the steel uh, columns, structural cold, you know, form steel has rounded edges, but for the purposes of this drawing, so I can snap to uh, uh, an edge when I'm dimensioning, I'll leave them square. And if you've ever uh, had to deal with uh, trying to pull a dimension from a rounded corner and you, you don't have hair anymore like I do, then you understand, okay? So now we're gonna triple-click and get that in a group. And then we're gonna go ahead and just start our component, cause I'm gonna make, cause these, what I want to do, and there's not a lot of columns, but I still wanna get in the habit of making a component out of these. And the name's not important, I've never, I've seen people name components before. I guess if you're gonna try to print out some kind of report or materials list from a, from an extension, uh, then that's important. But if you're just trying to create components in the drawing for use in the drawing, there's no reason to spend time naming them necessarily. Uh, cause you can always click on it and come up here and change the instance name if you want to. Or the definition, "Component number five", see? So anyway, I like to kick the can down the road as much as I can. Deal with that later. So now, these first uh, this is a little bit different, this carport is gonna be sitting on a slope. So, what I should have done was, and I just realized this, I should have left this top closed in. Let's see, it'll have a uh, I'm trying to figure out how I wanna show this. Let's just go ahead and show this. Like this. And um, cause what I want to do is put a quarter inch flangey or a um, what do we call them? Let's see, I want this to come out two, three inches, let's do that. On both sides. And I want that to be a thing right there. Great. That'll give you room to come over in the middle. And I'll go ahead and put 1.5 and 1.5. And then, what is this? Three. And we'll put ourselves a nine sixteenths hole there. Uh, we'll just show it as half inch. That's good enough for now. Again, I've got this, I don't wanna get too caught up in details at the moment, he may, he may decide to use a wood post on me and then I'd be stuck with all this time and detail. So, we gotta remember that we're kinda in schematic mode right now. And we just wanna get as much detail necessary to get the, the questions across to the owner. Okay. And you'll see why I'm gonna do that in just a minute. So, this would actually be, I'm gonna move this one over. Thirteen feet, he wants 12 feet, where's my axis? There it is. Let's see, he wants uh, twelve foot, uh, 12 feet. And then if I mirror that, it should be the right distance apart. Nice one. There we go, that should be, is that 12 feet apart now? I mean, in the middle, he wants 12 feet between the columns. Oh, 12, what's that say? Okay, so I did, I can't do math on Saturday mornings. Let's see. I'm gonna go from here, 13 feet. The, the mirroring messed me up, I think, yeah. That's my excuse. So it should be 12 feet between them. Yeah, that's what I want. Now, the weird part about this carport is gonna be the fact that it's, well, it's not, it's 40 feet long. That's not, that's not the weird part, okay? Um, so, we gotta go 40 feet from here. Cause he's pulling in this direction. I, when he first told me he wanted it 12 by 40, I was like, well, 12 feet's not deep enough. Well, he's pulling in the cars in this direction, cause he's limited on space. Um, so what I'm gonna do is just copy these for now. I should be able to go, what? Uh, 39 foot six? 39 feet six? And will that, won't that give me my 40 feet? Yeah, but now I gotta, now I gotta turn those posts around. Uh, or I can oh well, I'm just gonna do it, just do it Tony, 180. Sometimes you can just think, think, and think, sometimes you can just do it, do it. Even if it's wrong, do something. That's our motto in construction, do something even if it's wrong. And apparently it was wrong, because I'm not at 40 feet. I'm not sure, oh I, uh, let's go down here. Yeah. Double check that. Just make sure I'm on my axis here. 40 feet. Right, okay, so, is that right? Yeah, these should be, that's right, these are turned around. Now, here's the weird part about, not the weird, why do I keep seeing that? Um, this, there's a 27 inch drop uh, from this end to that end. He, he said he checked it, so what I'm gonna do is, I'm going to, I'm gonna go 27 inches down, and then I'm gonna move these down, and that's why I haven't drawn my grade yet. Cause I wanna draw my grade to cover up my footings. I could've just done that, couldn't I? Yeah, I could've just done that. And I can get rid of that. So now what I can do is draw myself a some, some dirt, some gravel. I think what I wanna do is go from yeah, there to, to there and to here. And uh, this is gonna help me establish the heights of the footings in the middle, if you're wondering why I'm doing this. It's not a hundred percent necessary, but so now I'm gonna make this a group. And now I wanna just expand on this a little bit. About four feet. So that it'll kinda give me a a better, a better feel. So that's more like it. There, now, we gotta go halfway 20 feet. Now, uh, you might be, you might be thinking um, that's weird, why, why is everything weird today? But this is what he's dealing with, right? He has, he has this grade that he's dealing with and it's sort of, you know, making retaining walls and all that, building the foundation. He's gonna save money and do it this way, so give Steven a break. And then we're gonna, what we're gonna do is decide, hmm, would this not go? I mean, ultimately, this is diagrammatic, because yeah, like that. Uh, well, it's not totally diagrammatic, cause now I know if I put the center of that at 20 feet, that the, the footing is gonna have to be raised up. Let's come up with some good dimension, two inches. Uh, what would, what would it be if we um, I know, the reason I'm being picky about this is because I want to uh, when I start dimensioning my post, I want to know, I want to know what the diff, the difference is between the and if I try to remain, have some kind of consistency. We'll just do that for now, that's pretty, that's pretty close. Uh, that's, that's pretty close, I'm happy with that. So, now uh, but here's the thing, our grade is not gonna be above this point. And I know what you're thinking, you're thinking you're, you're getting, this is too, you're getting anal about this and you shouldn't be. And you're right. Because, but, I gotta have two inches there. And uh, am I below, am I right at the, yeah, so that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna leave it right there. And that means we could have just left this one alone. That's kinda what I was trying to get at. Uh, but uh, I'm gonna leave it there, cause what I'm gonna do next is do the um, I'm gonna make these two columns down here unique to themselves. And then when I change one of them, the other one will change with it. And then also, if I have to change it, if he decides to do wood post, um, they'll, they'll, at least I'll be able to change this, those two, or one of these two. Uh, now, how far uh, are we di- this is, this is the other thing, I don't wanna have some weird dimension here either. So what is this? Two foot two, you see, I don't want that. What I wanna do, what I wanna be able to do is tell him um, okay, so if we go two feet here or even two foot two, then we would have to raise these up 13 sixteenths. And see, raising them up 13 sixteenths now is, is gonna make the whole thing seem more practical in the end. When I start dimensioning off, you know, for the drawings. The other thing is um, well, the other thing is, is that, hmm, you know, what just occurred to me is that we really want that to be 10 feet, because you buy your cold rolled steel, your cold formed steel tubes come in, you know, either 10 or 20 foot sections. So, really what you want this to be is uh, that two more inches up. Was that two? I believe that was 10, or 1. Let's uh, check it again. Why is it doing that? These are, these are kinda, kinda rabbit hole, these are kinda, these are kinda like rabbit holes, you go down sometimes. But um, it's okay, it's gonna be alright. If I go to here, from here to here, two feet, yeah. Alright, so uh, the point to that is, you see, all he has to do is raise up this footing a little bit to get, to be able to use standard length steel. Cause when you, whether you build these steel columns yourself or you have somebody make them, they're gonna be dealing with like 10 foot or basically 20 foot tubes and they'll be cut in half. So, and, so now, you, now what we can do is bring our LBLs over. And the reason I wanted to use these LBLs is because well, one thing that just occurred to me is that they're not 11 and seven eighths. Uh, poop on me. Let's fix that right quick. Because he wants um, I had 10 foot spans here on this job. And see, this is what you have to decide. Um, if you're gonna use less columns, you need bigger beams. It's physics and you have to address that fact. So he wanted just 20, he wanted 20 foot spans, so I'm still gonna verify this, but I'm pretty sure, cause I've used these, I've used LBLs before, a bunch. Thousands of times. And uh, I've pretty much gotten used to what the spans are like. So now, I can take these, oops. Wrong button. Move them, cause I don't need them for this anymore. Over here. From this corner. Get over there, there we go. And now you can see why. Oh, it just occurred, you know, what I, what else I need to do is fix the, this is why I didn't wanna, I shouldn't have got too anal about these holes. Is because they really need to be over a little bit, I can see already. And, you know, we might wanna have two smaller holes. Excuse me, like two quarter inch holes, instead of um, those, and I can, I'll fix that later, it's, it's when I get to the point where I know that he's gonna absolutely use the uh, steel columns after he sees this. We're gonna go here and then we're gonna just gonna rotate it. I've got a little trick here that uh, I'm gonna use Nathan Madeek's, uh, one of his tools. A trim tool that comes with his extensions. Why that's not wanting to cooperate, don't know why. Probably cause I'm not grabbing the corner. And it's still not there. Want you to go right there, quit doing that. Now, I'm gonna copy this, oh, I know what I'll be, I'll fix it first, but this is kinda cool, cause what uh, what you can do is on Madeek, on Nathan's Madeek truss extension, he has these uh, Madeek tools, trim. And you just pick a face of a, has to be a group. You pick the face you wanna cut to, let's see, which one am I gonna cut to, yeah. And um, then you go pick, you select the end of the one you're cutting. See, isn't that cool? And now I can select and this is probab- I'm just trying to, I'm just gonna show you the tool, and normally I wouldn't do it this way, but I just wanna show you. Tools, trim. I'm gonna select that face. Now I can probably just grab the end. Sometimes if you're not careful, you'll yeah, that's, that worked. Sometimes I've selected the wrong thing. And then I can just take this and put it back. But I like to interlock my uh, I don't know if you can see that, I like to interlock my LBLs like that. Cause so now you can um, actually like to do it the other way, I like for this end one to go all the way. Yes, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna fix that right quick. Uh, as a matter of fact, that probably was supposed to go back here. Like that. I probably put the corner in the wrong place. I don't like that hatch that I've got, this texture for these LBLs. I'm gonna change it. I used to have a real, one that looked like real LBLs, it was kinda, it was kinda funny. Now, I can copy copy this, Roger. So what I was saying about the uh, LBLs is that um, you know, you just, and I always, I usually will verify. Let's just mirror this one. I'll call uh, the company, one of the companies that makes them is Bluelinks, they make the uh, last one. They make the LBLs that I buy, Bluelinks is B-L-U-E-L-I-N-X. And have an engineering department. And there's a guy there you can call and um, giving, you give them your spans. Now why is that, why is that doing that? Hmm, okay, so I need to check my dimensions, cause I, cause I, what I want it to do is this. But I wanna make sure I'm at 40 feet on the beam. So I'm gonna come from here and go 40 feet, 40 feet. Forty feet forty feet. Uh-huh. Caught you didn't I? Caught you. Thought you were gonna trick me. So that was right. See how they interlock? The reason you don't want to have both of them over the end of the other one is because. You can't like right now I can. You 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 build it from the inside out, right? Cause these are so heavy, you would put them up there one at a time. So you would put this one up and then you would put this up and screw it into the face of that one. See, cause this one's not there yet. Right? That means you can face screw into that one. Then you put this one on and you can face screw it into there and then you put this one on and then you can face screw it into there. And what that does is there's a bunch of interlocking screws on the corner that way. LBLs one on one. And so now we have. Since I made these a group or components. Unique, I can just. Grab this and bring it up. Two feet cause I know. Twenty-four that I made it two feet for that reason. Because it's a logical dimension. And keeping things logical means they're gonna be simple and that's what you want in construction. Simple. That's what you want. So now. What I can do is. Go. Put this copy this and I'm gonna have to make two new columns. And I'm gonna start out with these cause these are gonna have the flanges are gonna be different. On the top. But they're still gonna be the same at the bottom. Why is that? Oh, that's a okay. I was like, why is there a line there? That is let's get rid of our guidelines. Yeah, cause that's right. Let's see if there's any comments. No comments. What in the world? Y'all being sleepy. On uh Saturday morning. Now I can make this and this unique to themselves. And when I correct this one. The other one. Will go down too. If I can get into the final edit mode I need to be in. To do it. Oops. Select the top and. Now something something just looked weird to me. That. Why did those cha- I said I wanted I said those to be. Did I undo accidentally? Why are they grouped? You know what I did? I accidentally grouped them instead of making them uh unique. Oh, look at that. You make group and make unique are right next to each other. Gosh, to pay attention. That's why I had to double click again. It to get to the edit mode. Now, one thing I still don't understand is why. That looks short. See now these stayed. Right height. Is this not the right height? Yeah, I don't understand. Oh well. So you can see what he wanted to do and I asked him about this. Do you want to you know make the footings stay level? And have them you know the piers come up out of the ground or would you rather have the post? And this is why I recommended uh because I think oh I think in the long run it's gonna look better. Cause you gotta kinda have to work hard to get those concrete. Uh piers formed up and pretty on their outside. If you keep them low to the ground, see we're leaving gravel. We're leaving space for gravel here. That's why I got the grade down. Cause eventually I'm gonna put I'm gonna show gravel in here that comes up flush. Uh with the piers, the footings. Like that. And so now I gotta fix these, but I'm not gonna spend too much time. On it. Well, let's see. It ain't gonna take that long. I could just I didn't even have to do that. I could just do this. And that'll be gone. What I should have done was make me a. A quarter inch mark first. I can do that by doing this. I don't need that either. So yeah, and I'll put the bolts in. Uh later. So this one should have changed too. Since it's a component with that that same definition. Yep. And so what we'll do is I'll I'll you know fix these holes where. They're more centered. And that would have been. This would have been uh inch and a half. Well, well, it's seven eighths. I hope I got these inches three quarter. Yep. So seven eighths. Oh wait. Yeah, I don't know why I have to do that in my head. Let's move both holes at the same time. Oh, that's right. There are no holes over there. So I just grab that hole and move it. That's not quite the center, is it? Well, I didn't grab both sides of the hole. That's bad. You gotta grab both sides of the hole. To move it. That's still not right. This is why I hate round. Round things. It's hard to grab the middle of them. That's why I don't like round footings. I don't like sonotubes. They drive me nuts when you're it's easy to draw them. But when you're trying to work with them in the field and let's say let's say you're trying to square this long. They go along carport up. Of course, this one's gonna be a little bit more difficult to square up anyway cause it's on slope. But if you got a round sonotube. Okay, and you're trying to hook over the edge of it to s- to to go diagonally. You know, it's 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 not impossible, but you have to kinda pick a random point. Where you're hooking your tape, you know, on the edge of it. Now, this is why I form up my footing square on top of the uh. What I do is I take an auger and I dig this hole. Right? I don't use sonotubes. They're a waste of money. Uh and then I take a two by six or two by eight and I'm gonna I'm gonna sug- suggest two by eights on this one. Uh because we want to resist more uplift. I wanna have more concrete. But um. Then you square it. You just take a two by eight and form up a box and set it on top of the ground. And that's how you get these footings on top of the ground like that. And now when you wanna square up or measure, you just hook off the edge of them. And I think they look better too in the in the long run. But everybody has their opinions. Delete guidelines. See if we have any comments now. Nope. Y'all are boring. Y'all are boring boring people. Now I can get rid of all this junk. Well, uh yeah, cause I think I'm gonna draw a new. I think the. The bracing I'm gonna do is gonna be uh steel. Not uh not wood. Either that or. Yeah, I'll decide how, but we will have we will have some kinda corner bracing. On this. But first I want to play with the roof. Now let me explain one thing about these columns. Uh the reason I'm use I wanna use steel columns is because he he said they have trouble, you know, issues with wind. And if you'll use a if you'll use a steel column and bolt. Bolt it down on all four sides, that's gonna resist more lateral movement. Than a wood post sitting in a uh wish I shouldn't delete those other. Let me undo them for a second. Yeah. The reason that the wood posts have more lateral. I mean have less. As you can see, if I delete the post. The stims and these anchors we anchor wood posts down with. Have one bolt right in the middle. Right? So uh when the wind starts blowing. There's no real you're torquing on these screws and usually these screws are not, you know, there's a bunch of them, but they're not not very big. So a wood post. That's anchored on a base like this can just sway in the wind up here. And then so the only resistance you have laterally is are those angle angle braces. What I wanna do is when I have a high wind situation, I wanna create resistance. At the base of the post and then at the top of the post and you're doubling the your resistance. The resistance, man. Also, you're also helping to resist uplift. If I have a wind high wind situation, I want more than one just anchor bolt holding my post down. So it's a matter of you know where you live, what your conditions are. You know, do you have wind conditions or snow conditions? Snow. If you have no no wind and lots of snow, then. You know, we're not so worried about it and so you might you might be able to get by with this. Cause then you're you've got gravity helping you hold it down. But anyway. Um well, I'm in this style. I wondered why it was so depressing. I usually use this pretty blue sky. Style. Yeah, there we go. So I can. Take a break and look at the pretty blue sky every now and then. But so what I'm gonna do is go back and delete this again cause I like having all this garbage. In my drawing. And turn off my axis. That. Alright, so now we're now we're gonna do some fun stuff. We're gonna do the roof. The roof. And Nathan said he just updated this. Extension, but I'm gonna go ahead and just do use it as it is. And why is it? Yeah, okay. I had a little lag there. I was wanting to pick that finch truss. So I'm gonna go here and that's supposed to be you know thirteen feet. And this is supposed to be forty feet. Yep, and so what we want is he wanted an eight twelve pitch. That matches his house. And we're gonna use a. I think. I like the twenty-four inch overhang. You could do a sixteen, but I like the twenty-four. I'm gonna suggest that first. And then advanced roof options, yes. And for now, we're just gonna say, okay. We're gonna put except for the roof. I'm gonna put corrugated metal. And save that. And oh, I got the roof turned off, the roof layer. I like seeing it go bam. There it is. And. That's a roof. Now I will admit, I'm gonna admit right now the twenty-four inches and this is what I like to do. I like to look at the scale and proportions of things. So let's go to a sixteen inch overhang and see if maybe that looks a little better. And that's why I like Nathan's uh. Extension his plugin because. This is a big help right here. Being able to go to the yeah, I think that's probably gonna be. And I forgot what we did. We do the ends, the gable ends. Edit. Let's see where. Yeah, sixteen. I thought it was already sixteen. That's what gave me the idea to go back to that. On the s- on the eaves on the side. I think that's gonna look a little better. Cause that I don't like the soffit hanging down too much uh. Past the the beam, especially you know if you've got a wall with windows then um. Even though I do like big overhangs because it adds to the coverage. You know, it adds to this coverage of uh dryingness. That you're gonna have. Now I don't have my. Inside I don't I I didn't lift it off because I wanted to show you the trusses. But I can show you those in a minute or better. Edit truss. Let's go to. Here we go. Now this is cool. Oh, he hasn't added them for the the roofs. That's right. Cause he added some siding for me. This was that was very cool for the wall, regular walls. He added some lap siding. But let's put uh. I like these battens. Let's see what they look like. Oh, you know what? I may have the uh wall cladding turned off. Is that what it is? That's what it was. Yeah. And let's try let's try some. And and this is temporary too because I like I'm gonna add. The other type of siding or actual um. Geometrical side the siding where I can get lines on the drawings. But for now, let's try. Uh. That's the roof. That is the roof. That's a little bit dark in it. We'll just leave like that for now. And the other thing I mentioned to Na- Nathan yesterday in my interview. Well, it was a request is to have a vertical offset. Uh so that this siding, we can put that variable in there or that parameter. And the siding will come down whatever you say and I would just extend it down a foot. And it would come down and cover the LBL. Uh so that will be on the to-do list. So what I'll do is now I'll meet with. Uh Steven. Let's see. What time is it? I have a meeting at one. I've got plenty of ti- what? Oh, twelve or so. Got plenty of time. I have another meeting at one o'clock. Online on my Meet server. And but I still have a little time, so. Let's show. Trying to think of the best way to do this is probably. Take some two inch angle. And. Kinda mad cause I got these somewhere. I got these somewhere and I can't remember where I where I did them. How far would it come at sixteen inches? I think we may have to come out farther. See sixteen would still leave you. What's that? Six and a half. Yeah, I don't wanna make them too big on especially on these sides because. I don't wanna create some kinda weird situation where he's got headroom issues. So we'll start off with sixteen. Is that right? Yeah, what I wanna do is um. We're gonna use two inch. Steel channel. Why does that look like it's not coplanar? That's weird. Hmm. That made me wonder there for a second. Yeah, let's go ahead and make this a group and so we don't have to worry about anything sticking to anything else. And so this'll be eighth inch thick metal. And then it will have the this is gonna be a little anal, but I'm gonna go ahead and fix this. Where, um, that is, that will, I mean, that will be cut like that, but uh, it will help me get this right. I only have to draw on one of these, cause they're, they're all gonna be the same. And then this will have this will be an eighth of an inch this way. And this comes out two inches this way. Hmm. That does look right. Okay. Yeah, I guess that's right. And they're optical illusion. That, and then that'll come over. Eighth of an inch. That. Yeah, let's delete our guidelines here for a second. Oh, I did end up with a line there, didn't I? And then what we'll have, uh, what happened? Well, that's weird. Why am I having to draw that back in? That line. There's something weird about this and I ain't gonna mess with it right now, but there's something weird going on. There we go. Now we got it back. Now what we'll have is a, uh, like a tab to make this easy. Now this could be welded or or bolted, whichever is easiest. We'll go down to two inches. Like that. So what they'll do is they'll just take a, a two inch angle and weld a tab on it. And then that way you'll be able to bolt it into here. Two, 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 and one, okay, good. And I can take this and move it over to there. See, there's something weird. This is not line. There's there. And that, and then that would be in the, you can either put it, put it flush with the outside like that, which is probably the best thing to do, so, because your bolt is gonna go more in the middle of this one. You don't wanna put this bracket in the middle and then have your bolt go up between the two L V Ls through that crack. You want your bolt to go up into the, into one of those. So now we'll make this a component. We'll get rid of all our guidelines. What did I say? And we'll make this a component. And and then, did I make it a component? Edit component, yeah. The nice thing about mirroring components is that I can still edit this and it will still, uh, you know, alter it, but it will, it will alter it in its mirrored state. Isn't that cool? And we'll take these. Then we'll turn them around just for the fun of it. One eighty. That it exactly worked, did it? Like that. See if I have any comments. No comments. It's as if you all can't type this morning. Silly, silly, silly. Now see, if I had been smart, you wanna, I just realized what I'm doing is, no, I still gotta do it because these are all, these are three different components. So, yeah, what I'm doing is the right thing. So, if these, if all six of these columns were the same component, I would just put that brace in that one component and it would show up on all these others, but I've got three different components, so it's not really that much of a waste of time, I don't think, to just copy them around. It feels inefficient. What really bugs me is the way the scrolling works sometimes. Trying to, trying to rotate that. Turn off the roof, dang. It's in the way, good lord. I got that. There we go. And again, I'll be able to edit just one of these and even all, all this turning and mirroring will, doesn't affect my ability to edit all of them at the same time. And they maintain their associations with each other, whatever that means. Scientific sketchup talk. Got those on. Now, what's cool is I can take these, these two and copy them. And mirror the, oh, let's see, I only copied them this way first. And then mirror it. What happened to that? That's weird. Oh, that's right. I was looking for the midpoint. I've got both of them selected, so they're gonna do it like that. That's right. Yeah, that's right. And then I can copy these. I did it right. Yep. And that's all my braces. But again, I'm set up now because if I decide to, you know, edit, edit one of these and make it wacky. See, they all go, so whatever I do now to one of them, they will all change and be appropriately in the right place. So that's cool. No time wasted there. And I don't know how I got my, how I turned the Yeah, I'm gonna delete this old roof. I don't need that. Don't need any of that. So what is all this stuff turned on? Oh, that's the truss. I'll leave those there, cause that's where I have my truss thing set up to, to view. So now, let's make sure we're in perspective mode here, uh, perspective mode, which we were. And there's our cool little carport. I'll find out what kinda car that he has. And we'll see, what about a truck? What do we have a truck? Let's see if a Ford F-150 fit in there. Sure it will. Mine's got a long bed on it, with this little girly, short bed. So now I'm gonna worry about getting it tilted right. That's funny. So ninety. And what we'll do is we'll put it I like to put the vehicles on these because it kinda gives you an idea, a sense of scale. We all kinda associate. We all know what a Ford one, uh, F-150 is, baby. That's right. We know what it is. Yeah, I wish I had gotten the angle, because now is that flat? I can't. Can't rotate with that, can I? No, I can't. Dang it. Well, one little trick I've learned is that you can just make yourself a little you know, make yourself a little face. I got that selected, but I can use this face to rotate with. So I can go down here and get this tire. Well, uh, wait a minute, let's try that again. Oh, I know what happened. I didn't I got it off of the, that, that axis. So now I can go down here and grab that and bring it down to the ground. And I, then I can get rid of my little face. And so what this'll do is sometimes it'll remind people, hey, there's big mirrors on trucks. Yep. But that's why I made it, um, let's see if I can find the middle of this thing. And what he's gonna do is park his vehicles end to end. So, gotta lift that line there. Like that. And you can see why I like big overhangs, because the higher this roof is up, the, the more chances water will be blown in this way, see. So if I had a flatter roof, I'd make it two foot, uh, I'll show you what I mean. If I had like a four twelve pitch, and this is what I like about Nathan's extension, it allows you to experiment with this kinda stuff. Um, let's put this at twenty-four. And actually I've learned that his, the way he does his, I need to make it twenty-two point five cause he measures to the back of the sub fascia. And we'll make it, um, let's make it a four twelve pitch update. Well, that's a little, that's, that's nasty looking. Let's make it a six. Let's make it a six. There we go. See, if you make it, you can get by with making your overhangs bigger if the pitch is not so steep. Because it doesn't drop down as far. I believe that's what I would do. If it was mine, that's probably what I would do, but. Let's go back and see. What it looks like. Now see, I remember when I used to draw these roofs, this stuff by, you know, hand. Even though you make components, you know, with your rafters and everything, you still gotta redo all the siding and fascia and all that stuff. So. Let's see if we can make this eight like he was talking about and look at it again. From a different perspective here. Literally a different perspective. I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm still leaning towards with the two foot overhang even though it looks a little bit much. I like having that, um. Now, I think he did say he was gonna have gutters, so that'll add six, five, six inches. Of overhang. So what you could do is. Just leave it at sixteen. And I'm kinda doing this for his benefit cuz I know he's, I know he's gonna watch this, so you can kinda get an idea. Of what it'll look like. And when I, when you, after he decides, I'll go back in and do things that the component won't do. And that's like fix these. You know, nip off these fascias. Right, right, you know, right there. That, that'll get cut off. But I don't wanna do that until, now I can do, uh. Let's do, let's put the gutters on there. Forgot Nathan is such a, such the man that he's got gutters. Gutters. And I'll probably have to adjust the location to the downspouts, but let's go ahead and turn them on. And, yeah, I usually make them about a hundred, hundred and twenty inches just for this, on something like this. Well. Again, we'd have to adjust them, but. Are they ever closed? Look at that. Well, that makes sense cuz they come back to the house line, which is that forty feet. And we probably wanna go ahead and put a downspout in the middle too because of forty foot. You know, we'd like to have the downspouts at least every twenty feet. So. You could get by with it. The roof is small enough. And that's how we calculate the number of downspouts. We do, we calculate the roof area. And, you know, a downspout will, I forgot what it exactly is, but it will carry so much water. And so it may be that this roof is small enough to get by with two downspouts. But when you have the, when you have the proper number of downspouts, you don't have to. Make your gutter look funky like put a high spot in the middle to make it drain. Cuz the gutters get so long, they start to hold water after a while. And, and the only way you can keep that from happening is. You know, pitch this up a little bit in the middle so it drains to both sides. And then you're like, well, that's a weird looking gutter. So it's nice. If you, if you've got enough downspouts, you can just about leave your gutter level, which it looks a lot better. So having that extra downspout in the middle would help with, uh, you know, keeping the gutters cleaned out good. And also, uh, keep it from having the gutter, cuz your gutter guy is gonna subconsciously wanna jerk, you know, raise that gutter up in the middle. And I won't do it now, but whenever, um, whenever he, we get finalized all this, I'll go in and actually edit. You know, I'll, I'll explode the gutters. And, uh, you know, lower them and put little. Um. Elbows at the bottom, but I don't do that until the end because if I alter this. Alter this roof, uh, assembly. Uh, I can't edit it parametrically anymore. So I leave it alone until I get to the end. And then I do things like lower this siding down. Uh, you know, I'll lower this siding down below the L V Ls to cover them up cuz they're not really. You're really not supposed to, you know, they're not supposed to be exposed to the weather. I, I mean, we've done this a lot, right? We've used L V Ls, I mean, for thirty years. I've never heard of any troubles with them, but still the manufacturer says they're not supposed to be exposed to the weather, so. We try to split the difference with them. Well, I think that's gonna look pretty good. We need to do a thumbnail, don't we? Need to get, cuz all I have right now is the spaceship that's crashing in the sand. As a thumbnail. I need to get. Need to get a better one. Uh, first, let me do this when I. On this, on this grade, what I do is. I'll take it down to where you can't see. The footing. Like that. And then what I'll do is I'll hide these. Well, you know what? The new Sketchup has a, uh, has a toggle for hiding. Oops, that's not it. What is it? Alt toggle. For hiding lines. And I'll show you why I do this in a minute. Why is it not, is it not, is it not hiding them? Am I gonna have to select them all? I need to learn how to use that new function, that new feature. It's supposed to, I may just be doing it wrong. Let me try it again. Okay. Erase and then you'll see the little cursor change, the little. Shift. Oh, it's shift. Oh, I know what I was doing. Alt is smooth. That's right. There's a, there's a lot of different little features now added into the eraser tool, which is kinda cool because. Um, you know, you don't have to keep going back and forth with different commands. So that's, that gets that. Now what that does is it hides the, when I start to do my construction drawings. And I actually do, um. This, this line can get. This one can go away now. These can't. I just, I was using those to set the heights of my footing. And actually. I have gotten into the habit of, let's see, shift. Of, uh, oops, that didn't work. I hid the whole thing. Well, I must've, I must've deleted it. Let's see, shift, yeah. There we go. So what I want, what I want is just the hint of the grade. I don't want it to be like stark. Uh, you know, stark lines. Cuz when you print, print these drawings, you, you know, I've learned that there's little tricks you can do to make it, make subtle. So let's get this view set up the way we want it. And then I'll show you. And then the style I use, this is kinda like the work. Like I'm gonna change this to, I'm gonna update that for the work one. But the style I use when I start printing drawings is this, uh, well, we'll use the construction documents. But you'll see. Let me turn the axis off. I don't like the axis. I don't like that. I'll update that. But you can see, if you get this in the right view. Let's see, what view is it? Yeah, well, it's hidden line. Let's turn the axis off. Axis off. And. What I have to do is, well, anyway, I'll play around with it. I usually just play around with it till I get it the way I want it. Uh, but I, I. I thought I updated that. If you'll notice that, that if I, when I hide those vertical lines, this thing hides the footings. Which I want to have to be able to show the owner how they're doing, but I don't want them to show up in the drawings, the elevations. So, but you can see in this style, you get the shade on the side, but this. What I'm trying to do, you see, if I get it like that, you don't see it. And that's how I would probably, if I was gonna call this the front elevation in the drawings, that's what I would do as a matter of fact. Well, this would be, this would be the north. So let me go find the north. I can't see. Where's my elevations, man? Okay, front, this is. Front, right, back. This is the back, so I'm gonna update that. So you see, oh, I see the edge down there. So I would put it just like that. And then I would update this to back. And then I would turn it this way. If, I don't know what happens if I zoom. It's like not. Very fine. Where's my button? For some reason it's going. And I need to turn off the, um. I'm just gonna go ahead and delete those. Now, now I've got weird, weird going on now with my other thing. I'm just gonna go ahead and delete these cuz they're the wrong trusses and I'll set up those views later. But then, you see, I've set this up. Maybe, and I might just go ahead and show it. You know, s- show that kind, that much of the underside to, so you could see kinda a hint of the trusses. And this would be the left. Update that. And then I think this is gonna be the front. But I'd kinda, I'd decide, you know, I'd kinda pick a view that was kinda a perspective, you know, to make it interesting looking. And then, um. Like that. And that would be the front. Update. And then I didn't do the right, did I? And you really don't need all these. On this, on this particular project, you could just do a front and a side, you know, view. And we'll, we'll go ahead and do them anyway. Update. And then now I can, you know, in my meeting, I can just spin it around to the different. You know. Views. It's, it's easy to. To, to, to show that way. Let's see, do we have any questions, comments? There we go. Hey, Daniel, how's it going? Howdy. Hey, Daner. How's it going, Daner? And there's Richard, my buddy from the UK. How you doing, Richard? Daner, I'm surprised y'all aren't out working on framing your, your little house, your tiny house. Just kidding. I'm kinda interested to know what Daner thinks about the whole U A P thing. Cuz I know his dad, his dad's a scientist or a. He, he's not retired scientist, is he? Author, extraordinaire. Uh, his dad, uh, is kind of an extraordinaire. He, he's a. He's, he, he's very smart dude. He reminds me of Alex a lot. Um. So anyway, I think this is about where I'll stop with this little project and. I will get with the owner. We'll meet and then we'll make some changes. But I think for the most part, I should've done my thumbnail right. I should. Need to get that thumbnail right. We're gonna do it there. And of course, we're not advertising for Ford, but we are advocating for Ford. So I'm gonna do. Shift, print screen. Well, you know, it, that's one nice thing about Sketchup. I can export a two D graphic. I'll put it in my thumbnails folder. If I can find it with all my other. Crazy folders. We'll call it Stevens Carport. That's good. It's already named and I'll be able to make a thumbnail. Uh, I'll also ask him if he wants to put a ceiling. I don't think he's going to. I think, uh, I did mention the bird, the bird nest thing and he didn't seem to be too concerned about that, which it, you, you know, it's not that big a deal. Uh. Uh, they're easy to tear down after the chicks hatch. So anyway, I want to thank you. Let me check the comments again. I wanna thank you guys for watching. I gotta get ready for my, oh, my one o'clock meeting. And thanks again.